Hello.
Hello, I'm sorry, I was multitasking.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody can hear me?
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep. Beautiful day today.
Gorgeous day.
A little chilly.
And I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna go back the other way this time.
I think you're right, Anne Marie. I was over on the beach working on the beach parking survey. And that wind is quite strong over there.
Oh, I'll bet, I'll bet.
Right along Cedar Avenue is just like a tunnel coming through there.
Somebody who's answering the call for fire.
Hi Bonnie.
Hey Tim, how are you?
I'm well, thanks, I'm well.
Anne Marie, Glenn, Ellen Lorraine, Jeanine.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Okay.
So I just sent the executive session Zoom link. I waited until now because I didn't want to get people confused. I didn't want us to end up in the wrong meetings.
You know your audience.
Well, it gets, it gets tough keeping track of all the different Zoom links, so.
Yeah, I bet.
Okay, so we're gonna be on this for the public session, then we get off, then we go to the other link.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I just made Glenn Marshall a panelist. Because he'll be involved in our first discussion item.
Okay.
Can you folks hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep. So at this point, I guess we're just waiting on Ted and Rob.
Right.
So I will tell you that Craig Stevens is gonna try and get on, Steve Evans, the chief is gonna try and get on, but he is working in the city of Wilmington.
Hold on, Ted's calling me. Hello.
It's magic, you say hello and he shows up on.
I know, well, because he called me to tell me he was in as an attendee, so. So now we're just waiting on Rob.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hey there Ted.
Hi.
Hey Ted.
It's a busy day here. Glenn, thank you for joining us.
Well, let me apologize that we're having this in the first place.
Well. But very good that you've been able to join us, thank you.
Yes. I don't know where Rob is.
He's in Virginia.
Well, right, but I don't know where he virtually is.
I'm just teasing, so.
I have his landline down there, let me give him a call.
Okay.
You can come in just to the city's link in the city site, and then you could elevate him from there.
Yep.
Okay. Works.
Looks like Glenn's got a backdrop of someplace we'd all like to be.
Oh.
I know.
I thought you meant Mandalas.
Mandalas. I don't wanna be on a blank white wall.
Yeah. For sure.
I was looking at Mandalas' background thinking he needs to decorate his office.
I do, no. I know, this space got redone, you know, a few months ago, and since I moved in, I put nothing on the wall, so.
You're gonna show us all the artwork that's still sitting on the floor, waiting to be.
That's exactly right, actually. There's actually a television on the floor too, that's supposed to be on that wall.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
One day.
One day.
Oh, there's Rob.
Good.
All right, so, everybody's here.
Okay. So, good afternoon, it is Monday, November 16th, and it is 1:04, and we are here for a meeting of the mayor and city council. Appreciate you all being here on this gorgeous day. And the first item on the agenda is a discussion with comments that were made on the social media on November 15th by a senior member of the Lewis Fire Department. I think we've all seen those comments and are concerned about the comments that were made and how the response is. I know I've had no fewer than 50 responses from our inquiries from people who are very concerned and disturbed by the comment that was made. Glenn Marshall, the Public Information Officer for the Lewis Fire Department is here to talk to us about us, about the comment and how, what action the Fire Department is taking regarding the comments that were made by Mr. Buckle. Glenn, the floor is yours if you care to speak. Thank you.
Absolutely, so again, I wanna preface this with an apology. So while Bill Henry was not representing the department at the time of his post, obviously it reflects directly back upon the department and as we've seen, the town itself. We do not tolerate this, we actually have a social media policy in place, and we are mandated by the state to train everyone in harassment training. So it is mandatory, and all of our members, including Bill Henry, have attended that. So I wanted, before I, I will brief you on what we're gonna do, but I would like to know what questions you have of myself or the department at this time. I do wanna preface this, Steve Evans, our chief, is working in Wilmington, and is most likely out on a call if he's not on this. And Craig Stevens is working with the state, and I know that he has a class that he is responsible for, so he may not be on.
Steve might be on Glenn, do you?
Okay.
There's somebody on here that.
Okay.
Just, is he gonna? Yeah.
Might be Craig Stevens.
Okay, so again, I open it up to you folks. Other than the obvious, what questions may you have of the department?
I think the, I don't wanna speak for everyone, and everybody should speak, but I think the obvious concern is going forward, what can we expect that you will do about this, to action? And obviously, what I've been, what has been shared is that they're taking pretty swift action. We've had a long-term relationship with, with the Fire Department, and I think it's been very, generally very positive. And we look forward to continuing that, but we, this is an intolerable message that was sent out last evening. And obviously, as you indicate, reflects negatively on both the Fire Department and on the city. Many, many people associate the Fire Department as being a city function. I've, in many of the emails or responses I've sent, I've had to indicate that you are an independent agency from the city, although we do make contributions to you, to the Fire Department. And so I, generally speaking, I think that's, we are seen as one and the same. So I think we need to be in concert here in speaking with a response, so you have the authority to make the response, so we're looking forward to that. Anybody care to say, ask, comment further, please speak up.
Okay, so not hearing anything.
Well, I'll actually say.
Okay.
First of all, Glenn, thanks for being with us, and Steve as well. You know, this, I think we should start by thanking the Lewis Fire Department, this is a volunteer organization that provides a tremendous service, both to the citizens within the city and obviously the people who live outside the city. I guess what I'd like you to address, if you would, is how we can assure our citizens. Because like Ted, I've gotten any number of inquiries. So how, how can we assure our citizens, and I'm sure you'll address this, that Mr. Buckle's actions are isolated and not representative of attitudes within the Fire Department?
So that is a fair question, and forgive me while I look away here, I'm pulling some documentation up. I do wanna let you know that we understand how closely we identify and partner with the city, because let's face it, this town logo is on everything that we have. So we understand that, and we are proud of that, I'm proud of that. What I do wanna let you know is it is not a universal, and I don't think there's any better message for me to relay to you that this is not widespread. So we have a gentleman that works for us by the name of David Hodges. Now, I worked with David, he worked with me, for me as, as a paramedic within the county, and he works for us as a part-time employee. David is gay, and he reached out to me, I did not reach out to him, and he wanted to send a statement, and I knew initially that that statement was meant for leadership of the department, and for the department itself. And so prior to this, Craig and I discussed this, and I reached out to David, I said, are you willing for this to be shared? With, and actually, I specifically said the town, I said, we're gonna have a meeting with them. This is not in any way, let me preface this, this is not in any way to take away from our ownership of this, this to try and explain to you that we, as an organization, are not represented by that statement. So, to whom it may concern, I've been a part of the Lewis Fire Department as a part-time member for over a year. I've worked hundreds of hours with both the volunteer side and the pay staff. They're no less like, no less than family to me. I have been out, in his quotations, "out" since before becoming part of this department, and I have never experienced anything but respect and acceptance from every member. That includes several occasions where I was around Bill Buckle. I plan to remain a part of this family as much as possible, and while I cannot tell anyone what is in anyone's heart, I can say that forgiveness and understanding is what our country needs most right now. I am proud to be gay and proud to be part of the Lewis Fire Department. Thank you for your time and allowing me to have my voice. Lewis Fire is, is strong, and we will get through this, through this way, we get through everything, together as a family of brothers and sisters from all races, religions, and sexual orientations. Sincerely, David Hodges. So, that is from an employee, and I'm proud to say that David is probably one of the best additions we brought to the county and to our Fire Department, because he, not only does he provide exceptional care, but as you can tell by the tone of the email, he is very empathetic. Now let's get to the nuts and bolts which you really wanna know. So Bill Henry has been suspended, and he has been removed as an assistant chief from any duty of authority pending a complete investigation. So, you know, and when I say a complete investigation, we have a due process within the department that needs to be adhered to. We understand that this was inflammatory, to say the least, insensitive, and I have already reached out to Camp Rehoboth, and we are working with Camp Rehoboth and the Blue Moon to create a setting to where membership or leadership of the, of the Fire Department can go and speak and answer any questions and assure the community that we do not look at you by your sexual preference, by your race, creed, religion, whatever it may be. We are a very diverse group of people that serve this community. With that said, unfortunately, as a volunteer organization, there are limitations to how we can manage all of these people outside. I come back to that we do have a social media policy, and we have anti-harassment program that is mandated by the state that we provide to every member. That is not the perfect world, right, and we've seen it. It's, it's in poor taste in every way, shape, or form, but for this to occur in today's climate amid all the hostility that's out there, it's, it's a further thing that we want, we believe in bringing the community together. We have a detailed plan on San in the Hood that we do each year. We do public outreach on a regular basis to educate people and to try and bring them into what we do. We understand the impact, we've already felt the impact of this, we've had, I've lost count of the emails and phone calls and social media posts, and people saying, you know what, we were gonna donate, we're not, how do I get my donation back? While financial is, is a big part of this, more importantly is our concern in any loss of competence and how we respond to the public during their times of needs. And there's only so much we can do for that right now, right, because we're gonna, we gotta rebuild it, and that's exactly what the press release that I've come up with is stating, you know, we have to rebuild anything that we lost.
Thank you very much, Glenn.
Yes, sir.
Comments from the table, anybody care to comment?
And I appreciate what you've articulated, and I think some of the steps that you've put forward are seem reasonable. Specifically with Bill Henry Buckle. I'll remind that this isn't the first time that he's been in the public eye for his behavior in public. So my question to you is, beyond a suspension, what, are there anything in place in terms of three-strike policy or other policies that would, would essentially elevate to a removal?
So.
I appreciate again, and Bonnie's point, I appreciate again that it's a volunteer organization, and Bill Henry's given, you know, good service in that regard. But this is concerning in this day and age that, that, you know, people can't control themselves in public.
I fully appreciate that, and so I will speak to the fact that we do remind everybody that 24/7 they go out the door, and they're wearing something, whether they're wearing something that says Lewis Fire Department or not, you can expect to be on a camera or a camera phone, somewhere along the lines. So we do our due diligence with that. So let's talk about the due process. So, again, the first steps have already been taken. Internally, we have a disciplinary committee. That disciplinary committee will meet, they will review what has been brought forth, and then a hearing will be held. So, again, just like any legal thing, we have due process at that hearing. Bill Henry will have the ability to, both sides will have, have their representation and have the ability to move forward as to how they would like to go. At the conclusion of that, the disciplinary board will excuse themselves, and they will adjourn as, as would a jury, and come up with a resolution, their recommendation, and that will be presented to the president, who in turn presents that to the department. Now, normally, normally this can take a period of time, but we have identified, due to the nature of this and the public nature of it, that this is going to be done in a very timely manner, because we can't afford, neither can the town, to be honest with you, to sit here and act like it is, it's just gonna linger. It doesn't, nobody. It does nobody any good. So I am hoping, and I've not had an opportunity to talk with Craig or any, any representation of the disciplinary committee to know if they've already established a meeting date. But this will be done in a timely manner.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I wanted to offer something. The question is, what is Mr. Buckaloo's status? I know he's been taken out of leadership positions, but is he continuing to function as volunteer fire department?
No, ma'am. He's suspended. He is suspended.
Yeah, the second thing is, and I, I am in no way saying this is true. I don't know if it's true. But something for the fire department to at least take a look at is there are allegations on social media that in addition to the homophobic statement that has been attributed, well, it's not attributed, Mr. Buckaloo, he decided to put it on social media himself. So there's no question of attribution. It's his own statement. But there also are allegations that he made racist statements the same night at a different location. So again, I'm not taking a position on whether it's true or not. I don't know. But the fire department leadership needs to, needs to be aware that that is on social media as well.
So, okay, that's, that's news to me. And I got to tell you folks, so I first became, when Ted and I spoke this morning, I let him know that my first contact was at 3 o'clock this morning when somebody that was there called me. And I have to, everybody that I communicated with while they were distressed about this has been very polite and very social. And, and that has been appreciated. But the, the energy and the importance of what was posted has, has been reinforced. I, I would have to check that. But I would have to say that as quickly as that post became apparent, that I would have received, we would have been notified of any racial. So I can research that. And I'm not saying that it did not transpire. But again, I think we're all aware of the world that we live in today. Whether it's a picture or a statement, as soon as it hits media, it's there forever. Somebody's going to grab it and they have the ability to get it. But we will, we will research that as well.
Eric, just add that as Ted and Bonnie and Andrew have all said, we value the service, volunteer service that the fire department offers. And Glenn, you have done the right thing by coming forward and you said the right things. And we'll, we'll all be looking forward very much to what you determine and how you remedy this. So thank you.
Thank you. Look, we are going to be transparent with this. Not that we, it's not the first time I've been down this road, unfortunately. This is a little different. And again, multiple, many of us from the department have already reached out to Mayor Becker. And he will remain in the loop. And if he deems that we need to get together again via Zoom or however it may be to provide you an update, we will. Again, we, we understand the severity of this situation and how it is, its fingers out well beyond the Lewis Fire Department. It does. And we have to fix it. And that's, while, no matter what we do, that fix is not going to be immediate. And we understand that. We, we have to kind of go back. So.
Glenn, thank you very much. Tim, did you want to say something?
I have one or two questions. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Can you clarify for me, please? Is Mr. Buckaloo a volunteer or is he an employee?
So he is, he is a volunteer. He is a like member of the department. He is a volunteer.
Okay. So he, there's no salary associated with his association with the fire department, correct?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And do I understand correctly, the letter that you read earlier from Mr. Hodges, he was described as a part-time employee? So he actually is an employee of the department, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you. Glenn, we really, all of us appreciate your coming here today and your very swift action. I know when you and I first spoke this morning, you were formulating ideas as to how you were going to go forward. And this, in a matter of a few hours, has come together. And I think in a very positive way. So we thank you and all the leadership of the volunteer fire department for doing what you, what you have done and taking this very prompt and decisive action. And I think it reassures the community that, you know, you are here to serve the entire community. And, which is one of the concerns that was expressed well by Bonnie. And it is an undertone that I heard in some of the emails I received today. So I do appreciate this very prompt action. We look forward to your continuing to address the issue, the situation as it has unfolded and as you get through your regular, normal activities of hearings and things that are laid out in your bylaws. And we would appreciate your reporting back as to what the final result is.
Absolutely.
Okay?
I will ask Ted, if anybody there has questions down the road, if you can please provide my contact information.
Happy to do that.
If your constituents reach out to you and they have a question you are not sure of, please either, either reach out to me directly or have them reach out to me. We don't want this, we don't want unanswered questions.
I think everyone that has responded to my response to their email this morning has been very reassured that there was action being taken in a prompt manner. So I think we've stemmed this in a matter of, you know, by the time, I mean, I got my first message at about 5:15 this morning. And so, in, what is this, barely, not even six hours yet? We've done a lot, or you've done a lot. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And appreciate your taking time to join us this afternoon.
Oh, no, sure. Thank you for having me. And I, again, we apologize that we're here. But we're, we're going to do the best we can to rectify it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we can move on then to item number two on our agenda, which is presentation of possible action on documents related to the purchase of the Jones Farm. As we know, the Jones Farm has been a topic of discussion. This is a very unique partnership of the Sussex County and, and the Board of Public Works in the city to acquire this 37-acre parcel. And it has required a fair amount of work in terms of coming together. But I think it does represent a very exemplary opportunity for us to do something very positive, not only for the, for the community, but for the entire region as we look to preserve this parcel, which is directly over our recharge area. There has been a lot of work. I want to thank Mike Hoffman, who's taken the lead in the, from the legal aspect of sort of putting these pieces together. But Glenn Mendelis and everyone else has done a great job of pulling this together. We're getting close to, coming to a closing date. We did have in the document that we originally signed a closing date of November 30th. And we're hoping that we can move that up to the 23rd of November. So today, it's very important that we go through these documents. And Glenn, you sent us a lot of documents earlier this morning. And I think we probably should walk through some and answer any questions that may arise.
Yeah, there's obviously no expectation that all of you are able to read them all, especially certainly not today. And some of them, you know, transfer tax affidavits and those sorts of things are not necessarily you look at. But it is important that you understand kind of the major components of this agreement. I sent you by email today, one issue that's arisen that may be appropriate for discussion in executive session versus regular session. So I might ask that any action on the documents be at the conclusion of the executive session today? Are there, are there questions, though, of a major context as to how the different pieces fit together?
And I'd like to confirm that the, the wetland survey resulted in an estimate of something like 29 upland acres? Is that my understanding?
It did. Let me bring it up right now. And tell you exactly what it was.
It was 27.
Uplands are 31.46 of upland. 6.21 of wetlands. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions about this? Do we have any question? I don't see any questions in the chat. Do you, Anne Marie? From the public? Okay. Well, hearing none. I think then, if there's no further discussion at this point regarding this, we could probably then move on to the executive session portion of our meeting.
Can I ask a procedural or possibly technical question to Glenn? So, we're, right, they're going to have to take action, which means that we need to do that on this Zoom. Are we able to set a time if people want to come back to this link? Can we set a time at which we will come back here to take that action?
Essentially 1:30 now.
We could do that. Or alternatively, I think you could, if counsel is comfortable with it, take a motion to authorize the execution of the Jones Farm documents. Not with the fact that the council may decide to rescind that action based upon something that might be discussed in executive session. If that happens, you'd have to put it on a, either have to set a time for that or put it on another agenda. Are you, is there, is there any meeting of council? Not before, and we're, and we're within seven days?
But given the time sensitivity of it, I'm assuming we could do something.
You could call a special meeting. You don't have to have seven days' notice for a special meeting.
22 hours.
Anne Marie, I, isn't it pretty standard that after an executive session, you go into public session at the end of it, whenever that ending is? And at that time, we can take action?
Right, but the, so with Zoom, we don't have, the, the executive session is not.
It's not public.
Right, it's not.
You only have five people in the public session right now.
It doesn't matter.
I know, but I'm just saying that's all you have right now, is five.
It would seem to me the best thing, I mean, I don't know that we can, we haven't posted going back into public session. I mean, in other words, there's no link out there. If we go into executive session, then we want to go into public session to act, there's no link out there for anybody to join the public, the post-executive session public meeting.
Unless we come back to this, unless we come back to this meeting.
Yeah, but people won't know to do that.
Well, it would be the people that are here now, so.
Well, but that's not, I mean, I actually think Glenn's approach is the better one, which is we basically conditionally approve everything subject to something that happens in, whatever, in executive session. If so, we go with what Tim was talking about. Schedule a special meeting to take further action. Otherwise, we just assume that the condition subsequent has not arisen and that approval is appropriate. Does that make sense, Glenn?
It does. There's one other thing that I might, I might add is that, you know, it is legal for you to announce during this meeting that was publicly noticed that this meeting is going to reconvene at a certain date and time. And, you know, so you could say, for example, we, you're going to take an action now, possibly to conditionally approve it. Should there be anything that comes out of executive session, we will be reconvening on a date and time and announce now. So it's, so it's on the record and the members of the public who wanted to attend this meeting are aware of it. And then to the extent that meeting is needed, you'll, that date and time is needed, you'll have it. If you don't need it, we can put something on the website or announce through some mechanism that you won't be convening. It's just one more option to, you know, make sure that i's are dotted and t's are crossed. But taking action now would be helpful to the process of the entire thing, leaving yourself some flexibility to take an additional action should you need so, need to.
I think that sounds like a plausible way to do it. We could theoretically set another meeting date as a tentative, if you want. I think your idea is a good one.
So do we want to go ahead and conditionally approve?
Yes, we need a motion, Bonnie. You want to do that?
No. Complicated for me. I'm going to leave this to somebody else.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to tentatively or to conditionally approve the Jones Farm agreements. With the understanding that if any amendments need to be made, that we will be scheduling a special meeting for a public opportunity to hear those changes.
Do we have a second? That's good. I think that covers it. You satisfied with that, Glenn?
I am, unless you want to give a date and time now. And I kind of like the idea of the public who is interested in this is on right now. If we could give a date and time.
Right.
Announce during this meeting, it would help.
I think that would be helpful.
Is there anything, is there anything overly clumsy about just saying, we'll reconvene this afternoon at 3:00 in public session?
No, we'd be ready.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's another option. So long as you announce it now and give a time certain so people can be back on this link and we'll all convene back in this, in this link.
Okay, I can do that.
What time is the planning commission meeting, though? Is that 3:30?
They're at 3:30.
We think we can get that done, yeah?
I don't see why not. I mean, if, if we come back just to take action.
Okay. So you want to amend your motion to say 3 o'clock this afternoon?
Have to go to the hole.
I think Janie can probably say that.
Just say, yeah, we'll reconvene at 3 o'clock if there are any substantive changes in the agreement.
Great, thank you.
As part of that motion, I just need to ask, who are we authorized to sign the documents? Would that be the mayor or the city manager?
I think the city manager would be better practice.
I'm sorry?
The city manager, the city manager has the executive authority under our charter. The, we could either have all five council members sign it or we could have the city manager sign it as a, as a regular matter, I think.
I think I, all five is really too, expecting too much, given everything that's going on here. There's too many moving parts for you to try to get all five of us together. Anne Marie, it looks like you get to sign it.
Okay.
Do you need a second to the motion, mayor?
Yep, we do. Anybody want to second the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bonnie. The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed?
I don't, I'd rather defer action until 3 o'clock, so I'll oppose.
All we're doing is tentatively approving it until, if there's any action to come back to.
Right. I don't particularly, the idea of conditional approval doesn't appeal to me very much.
Okay. So Tim, what, how are you voting?
I prefer not to right now. I, I kind of, I think I share Rob's sentiments on this. I've never agreed to some, yeah, it seems premature. How do you vote, Ted?
I'm going to vote in favor of it. I think we, you know, I think it's just a matter of a conditional, if we have objection or we have issues, we can come back.
Well, you've got your vote, then.
All right, so the motion carries. Thank you. So now we need a motion to go into executive session.
Just so the record's clear, because Janie's going to wonder, so councilperson, Richard, you abstained?
Yeah. Why did we call against?
Okay, thanks.
So Andrew and Bonnie and I voted in favor. Okay.
Right.
All right, so now we need a motion to go into executive session.
You moved.
Second.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. So we need to lose our other three people who are on as attendees at this.
So we're going to go out of this.
So we have to go to a different.
That's right, we have to go to a different.
I sent you all an executive session length, so.
Okay.
Okay, give me, give me one extra minute, by the way, and then I'll be right back.